Thank you. I'd like to welcome you all here to the March 12th legislative meeting. Start first with a public hearing. Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that the public hearing will be held at 2:00 PM on the 12th day of March 2020 in the legislature of Chambers, Fourth Floor, Suyoe County Office Building, 46 East Springfield Street, Suyoe, New York, at which time all persons, designated to express their view, may be heard through the matter of the consideration of requests for landowner inclusion within the existing certified agricultural district pursuant to the New York State Ag and Markets Law, Section 303D, as amended. In accordance with the New York State Ag and Markets Law, the following applications were received during the established annual window of January 1st through January 31st, were reviewed and recommended for inclusion by the Farm and Land Protection Board, and will dispense with reading the tax map numbers. Name, Seafrohno Shawn and Tony, municipality Hannibal, acres 20.72. Curtis Manor LLC, municipality Oswego, acres 10.75. Marsh Wade, municipality New Haven, acres 15.62. Turpinning John and Lee, municipality Phoenix, 27.28. Yaman Courtney and Daniel, municipality Mexico, 11.3. By order of the Suyoe County Legislature, February 13, 2020, Christopher Jones clerk. Any persons wishing to be heard on proposed parcels to be included within existing ag districts, as stated, please step forward and state your name. There being no persons wishing to be heard, Mr. Chairman, I request you to clear the public hearing closed at 2:00. Court, please call a roll.
Michael Yurden.
Here.
Herbert Yurden.
Here.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Holtz.
Here.
Roy Rehill.
Here.
John Martino.
Here.
Bradley Chudal.
Here.
Paul Vals.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Here.
Melissa Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Here.
Patrick Twiss.
Here.
Stephen Walco.
Here.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Drum.
Here.
Ori Mangano.
Here.
Robert Wilma.
Here.
Marie Shot.
Here.
Tim Stoll.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Crossed.
Here.
Morris Sorvello.
Here.
Mark Greco.
Here.
Ralph Stacy.
Here.
Thank you. Invitation, please?
Could we please stand for the invitation? Let us be thankful for this opportunity to serve our community. Help us to be kind to one another as we confront difficult decisions. Make strength strong in our hearts, that would unite us, build bridges across all that divide us. Grant us clarity, courage, and resolve, and above all, we ask for guidance in all that we do. Amen.
If you do not see our representative from the fire department, so I will lead us in the bunch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, just as for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Trust me, seeing the minutes of the county legislature meeting from February 13th, I'd look for a motion. Motion, many seconds, any discussion? All over the paper?
Aye.
Aye. All over the paper? Thank you. This time, I'd like to welcome my old mayor friend from the Village of Central Square, Mr. Bud Murphy, and my new mayor friend from the city of Oswego, Billy Barlow. I understand Dina made it, but you're not sitting, why? You don't like a little more? And also the newest mayor, City of Fulton, Dina Michaels. Thank you. This time, legislator Gilson.
Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I had the pleasure today to have some special guests that we toured our beautiful county facility building, and that was several department heads and their staff, and this group was well received. I couldn't have been happier with the participation and cooperation we got. It was exciting. I hope it was exciting for the kids. So they're here with us today, so at this time, I'd like to present the Plaskine Middle School Student Government, their teachers, Mrs. Truax, and the building secretary, Mrs. Peter.
You can't stand, so you wouldn't be confused with all these old people. All right, at this time, we have some introduction of visitors that are coming, but I'd like to make a special announcement to a gentleman that didn't want any kind, but legislator Wilber.
Well, we have a lot of people we're honoring today here for their years of service for Oswego County, and the individual that I have the honor and privilege to recognize for 30 years of service, continued service here in Oswego County is our county administrator, Phil Church. So if the county administrator would please come forward along with our chairman, and he doesn't really want to do this, but I guess us 25 are his boss and we're telling him. And if a minority leader would like to come forward along with chairman of finance and personnel, Sam Martin.
They twisted my arm.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
So we want to thank you and congratulate you for your 30 years of service. Would you start Camp Alice Youth Bureau? You worked your way up through a number of departments, both with our Public Relations Department, as well as our Purchasing Department, and eventually making it to County Administrator. We want to, on behalf of the Majority Caucus, as well as the whole legislature, want to thank you for the efforts you put into this job, 24/7 job that it is, helping lead the departments forward and taking the direction that's set by the legislature and implementing that for us. So thank you for that and all the work you've done throughout those 30 years. We all know that he wanted to be Phil if he didn't want to speak, so.
I just like to speak. Yeah, that's fine. But thank you very much. Seen a lot and worked with a lot of different, great people over the last 30 years, and enjoying the job, and I'm going to continue. So thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call forward the Public Safety Committee, along with Bradley Hilton. Want to make sure the right Hilton's retired. Squish together. Ready, three? Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
So in recognition of honorable public service and the employment of Oswego County, presented as an expression of appreciation for dedicated service for the benefit of Oswego County and the welfare of its citizens, I have the great honor and privilege to present this retiree certificate of appreciation to Bradley Hilton for all of your years that you have put in with our Sheriff's Department. Thank you so much.
No, we're not going to.
I was going to say people.
Again, a career down there in jail was very impressive, and he kind of runs the inmates for us, their intake and their classification, and turning somebody who's in disorder into us. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call forward the government and court, along with Brenda Salata, and the county clerk of the office, along with.
Human Services, if you want to line up.
And yet, everyone squish in, squish in. Ready, two. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
We'd like to present this certificate of appreciation for 10 years, for the solid day. Glad that you've been able to work that long for it, and I'm sure you've done a great job, and we'll give you this one soon.
I'd just say a couple of brief words about Brenda. Brenda has served as Senior Motor Vehicle Clerk at our DMV. She has been the floating Senior Motor Vehicle Clerk for a lot of years, unless you're exact, 10 years of that service. So what that means is we obviously have three DMVs throughout the county. She has been willing to travel between all three of those DMVs to help augment and support our services that we offer in all of those offices. Not easy work by any stretch of the imagination. As you know, we have to have a senior in order to run and operate an office. For some mornings, that's an early phone call attempt from Kathy to say, hey, we need you in Fulton, hey, we need you in Plaskine, we need you in Oswego. Brenda's always been there, and I got to say, replacing someone like Brenda is darn near impossible. So that's going to be a big challenge for us, but 30 years of great service will be all right. I mean, she's already started to train the person that's going to take her spot, which is a true credit to the employee that she is. So congratulations, 30 years. We'll be very sorry to see you go, but I'm very happy for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to human services, committee 44, along with Nelson Matz, DSS, along with director, Elton. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
30 years for Nelson Matz, all within the employment training. So this is a guy that has seen a lot of folks come in without hope, without a drive, often dependent on resources for his income, and been able to, through a lot of diligence and hard work, gotten those folks on the path to subsistence. Really, one of the most critical pieces of DSS, and we're pleased to send Nelson off to retirement. Woo-hoo! And really wish you well, you know, I want to thank you for your diligence and hard work. Nelson has been incredibly creative. Many of you may have seen him in local theater concerts, and so he brings that same kind of creativity and charisma into his job, and we're all going to miss him very, very much. So thank you.
I do. Good thing you don't have a microphone. Chris, the director. She's panicking now because they asked me to speak. But I am deeply honored and grateful for this recognition, but I just want to say that I hope that the legislators that are here will continue to recognize the work that my colleagues continue to do every day for the people in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Helen Chetney, also from DSS, to come forward. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
She just said all the good ones started 30 years ago, so. She's got it down.
Well, Helen is, you know, I saw her in the parking lot coming in, and so I'm going to share with you the secret, and that is that Helen's one of my favorites. You know, she is right down at the lower desk in our lobby, so every, all these visitors, about 100 a day that come through, see Helen. We have, as you can also imagine, sometimes some pretty volatile situations playing out already. Helen can spot those, admit that in the blog, and connect with our officers there, and she's been our union president for CSEA. I've worked with a lot of CSEA union presidents in my 40 years in this business, and I want to tell you, this is a girl who's very grounded, who understands that we all want the same thing, and that is good services to our most vulnerable populations at DSS. And I am proud and honored to be a colleague, and it's 30 years, but not retirement. So I'm going to keep trying to bribe her into staying here, but thank you for.
I got one contract to negotiate before I go out.
So I might get a contract to delay the test.
So when you say, is she crazy? Just remember, it's me. I'm not really crazy. I'm going to ask anyways.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The Suyoe County Legislature recognizing Agriculture Literacy Week, March 16th through the 20th of 2020. Whereas with all this technological marketing and scientific innovations, modern-day agriculture is a mystery to many people, and whereas Suyoe County farmers provide a wide variety of products to grocery stores, farm stands, farmers' markets, and pick-your-own farms, whereas the need for increased agricultural literacy is more crucial than ever for today's citizens and students to understand how food is from farm to table, and whereas, in celebration of Agriculture Literacy Week observed March 16th through the 20th, 2020, volunteers throughout the state will read a book with agricultural theme to second-grade classrooms. Students and teachers will also benefit from hands-on lessons, and whereas now, at its 15th year, Agriculture Literacy Week has helped to bring agriculturally themed books and resources into thousands of classrooms and libraries throughout New York State. Now therefore, I, James Wetherup, chairman of the Suyoe County Legislature, and on behalf of the entire legislature, to hereby recognize March 16th through the 20th, 2020, as Agriculture Literacy Week, and urge all residents to recognize the importance of agriculture in Suyoe County.
We'd love to say a few words about agriculture. Agriculture is the basis of everything that we eat and our clothing. So it's so important because so many people, the area in which that we live anymore has been so far removed from the actual farmer that sometimes we lose everything that it's about, and it's so important to have an Agriculture Literacy Week so that we can all have an opportunity to realign us with what agriculture is about. Recognize it. Be honored about it. The agricultural farmers and all of the farmers in the United States and the world need to have some recognition, and in Oswego County, I'm very proud that we do this Agriculture Literacy Week.
Thank you so much for this partnership. One out of every five students will enter into career in an agriculture field. Understanding not only how food grows, but the system in place to safely move the food to our plates is powerful. New York's agriculture industry boasts opportunities for careers in food production, food science, technology, and more. To building student awareness and understanding of local food systems, we are empowering them to choose a career that will directly impact their local economies and the health of their communities. This year in Oswego County, we have 20 volunteers going into 20 schools to reach to over 1,300 second-grade students in 71 classrooms. This wonderful program would not be possible without New York Ag in Classroom, Oswego County Farm Bureau, for now cooperative extension of Oswego County and this wonderful legislature. Thank you so much for supporting youth and agriculture.
Legislator Wilber, any public speakers on resolutions of the day?
There are none.
Thank you.
Considering one fact, maybe there are more.
You don't need your water, you end up down there.
Got a thousand employees to thank, Jay. Welcome to the 2020 State of the County address. Good afternoon. Before I did my official address, I'd like to take a minute to briefly speak about the issue that's on top of everyone's mind this week, the coronavirus. I want to assure all of our residents that our leadership team, in concert with our local state and federal partners, has been working diligently to stay abreast of this issue, and plans are in place to address the various potential scenarios should they develop. In the meantime, I'd like to encourage everyone to remain calm and to be vigilant in your efforts to take preventative measures to avoid exposing yourself and others to the virus. Do your part by following the advice of the medical professionals, and we should all come through this with minimal impact to our lives and communities. Thank you. As we celebrate our 204th anniversary throughout this year, we should keep in mind all of our predecessors who dedicated their time and talents to the ongoing mission to make this a better place for all. I would especially like to remember legislator Jack Prow, Kenneth Wheeler Jr., and Dan Eath, three former members who left us for a much grander chamber in 2019. To our first-term legislators, legislators Yurden and Yurden, Ori Mangano, Robert Wilma, and Mark Greco, and Ralph Stacy, I offer a renewed message of welcome that comes with my encouragement to accept and approach your newfound responsibilities in a patient and thoughtful manner. For some of you, this is your first foray into elected office and public service, so I suggest to you and to remind your colleagues, we did not choose this path simply to enrich ourselves. We are here instead to enrich our communities with a greater vision and a spirit of hope and achievement. After almost seven years in this body, and just over one year as a chairman, I was honored and humbled by your support when you chose me to lead the county into the new decade. The complexion of our county legislature is somewhat different with the addition of six new members, but our leadership team will largely stay intact, recognizing the progress that we have enjoyed over the last year or so. While many of the faces have changed, many of our goals and objectives have not. Much remains to be done, but I am certain that if we continue to grow our spirit of cooperation, both internally and externally, with our constituent communities and beyond, the future of Oswego County will get brighter with each new agreement and partner that we embrace. It has been said that the measure of a person is not where they stand in times of ease and convenience, but rather where they stand at times of challenge and controversy. Let us commit today to stand together and make the tough choices that will be necessary over these next few years to move the county forward. If you'll permit me, I'd like to start these conversations by sharing some recent accomplishments and thoughts about where we go from here. To start with, while it was a small reduction, we were able to craft a county budget for 2020 that resulted in a decrease in the generic tax rate. This was the first time in seven years that the rate has decreased. Having said that, it was worth noting that the rate had not changed for four years prior, and when we look back over the last 15 years, the rate for 2020 is 16.4% lower today than it was in 2005. To put that in perspective, if the 2005 rate of $9.20 per thousand had kept pace with inflation, it would be $12.11 today instead of $7.69. Through careful fiscal management, we've been able to negate the inflation impact on your tax dollars over that period. With this budget, the county has also achieved its goal of eliminating dependence on the use of unappropriate fund balance to stabilize the tax rate, making it the first budget in 15 years to be balanced strictly between expenditures, expenditures, and revenues. This year, the fund balance can be appropriately used by the legislature for multi-year planning of our capital reserves, capital projects, and to cover any large unanticipated expenses that arise. This is a goal we've been working on for quite some time, and one that all of our team can take pride in. Our 2020 budget provides funding at responsible levels for the services mandated by law and those valued by our residents, including snow removal, road maintenance, law enforcement, economic development, emergency communications and response, and human services for youth, elderly, the unemployed, and veterans. This has been and will continue to be a very difficult task going forward, one that needs careful and thoughtful deliberation as we attempt to strike a balance between keeping the county tax rate down and providing the types and levels of service that our constituents believe are essential to maintaining the quality of life that we all enjoy here in Oswego County. While it varies slightly from year to year, our annual budget is about $217 million. Of that, more than 80% pays for state and federal mandates. To help cover this cost, the state gives us $38.7 billion, and the feds give us $26.2 million. That's just $64.9 million for more than $174 million in mandated costs. We pay for the rest through property tax, pilots, sales tax, fund balance, and other miscellaneous revenues. If we're going to be successful, and our goal of keeping property tax stabilization is one of our top priorities in 2020, and if we want to do that in a way that minimizes our reliance on reserve funds, we need to find ways to increase our tax base and add jobs in our community. Working with our federal, state, and regional partners, I feel certain there are opportunities in front of us. We must also recognize that in some Formed by this body in 2016, the land bank was created to deal with blighted vacant and abandoned properties throughout the county. These properties were not generating tax revenue and were dragging communities and their tax values of neighboring properties down. After final approval from the state of New York, the land bank began its mission in 2017, and has since then worked to strategically address properties throughout the county and through demolition or rehabilitation, putting them back on the tax rolls, increasing the value of surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Since 2017, the land bank has returned $1.5 million in property value to the tax rolls, and the numbers continue to rise. Twenty-two structures have been demolished, 25 have been completely rehabilitated, while 15 more are currently in various stages of rehabilitation. Over the course of the first few years, a strong partnership has developed between the land bank, the legislature, the cities of Fulton and Oswego, and most of our towns and villages, and even some of our local banks. When coupled with the good work done by the block builders in Fulton and the Renaissance Association in Oswego, land bank projects are helping to encourage neighborhood pride and investment, not just in our two cities, but in communities throughout the county. While not specifically a county project, our many years of partnerships with the New York D C helped to encourage that agency to acquire the former elementary school in a village of Cleveland for conversion into a new training facility. The project, when coupled with their plans to repair and rebuild the historic Cleveland Dock on Illinois Lake, will surely have some significant economic impact in our easternmost village.
Can I clap for that?
Finally, we can't overlook the partnerships we have developed under the New York State Shared Services Program. Our current shared services plan, developed by town supervisors, city and village mayors, and under the leadership of county administrator Phil Church, projects potential annual savings of more than $1.9 million across their various municipalities. A clear demonstration that coming out of our individual silos and working together, we can continue as a team to make Oswego County a better place. Looking forward, we have several initiatives on the horizon. Infrastructures and a few of our facilities will provide greater access for our customers. Funding from New York State will allow us to stabilize the wealth in our camp Hollis facility, protecting that asset from the ravages of wind and high water on Lake Ontario for many years to come. We're also moving forward with mandated renovations at the Public Safety Center to comply with the state court system space demands. The transition of Oswego House Behavioral Services Unit out of our Bonner Street facility into their own site will allow us to address overcrowding at some of our other offices. 2020 will also include the finishing work on our new record center. While the outside may not complete, a facility like this has many unique requirements for the safe and proper maintenance of our records, so some special interior work still remains. Mike shaking his head. We also propose today to award a bid for construction of a new sewer line that will connect the county airport and the adjacent industrial park to the city of Fulton's collection and treatment system. This is a project that's been 10 years in the making. 2020 marks the start of a new national census count. We will be coordinating a very comprehensive effort to ensure that we are fully counted. Data from the 2010 effort seems to indicate that we have areas in the county that may have been undercounted by as much as 25%. This means we potentially could have lost out on millions of dollars in federal aid for various programs. We hope you and others will help us spread the word on how important this effort is. Other initiatives that continue to advance include our third year in the multi-year process of a four-county effort that a portion of Lake Ontario designated as a national marine sanctuary. This process, if approved, can have a tremendous economic impact on our region, while helping to further protect our vast underwater historic resources. Also regarding historic resources, we are more than halfway through another effort that is analyzing the possibility of designating the Fort Ontario Military Reservation, including the Safe Haven Museum, as a national historic site or perhaps even a national park. Tourism, as you know, supports a major part of our small business community, and these initiatives, if approved, could result in thousands more visitors to Oswego County and the Lake Ontario region. In the interest of time and departure from recent state and county messages, I'm not going to detail, you'll be happy, all of the amazing things that our staff does day by day. But suffice to say that a greater shared vision for our goals, coupled with enhanced communication between and among our leadership team, our department heads, and our frontline staff and county government, is operating more efficiently and effectively than ever before. On behalf of this legislator, I would like to thank our county employees and department heads for a job well done. I assure you all that we know how hard you work and appreciate your dedication to your job and the people of this county. Our opportunities are plentiful and our challenges abundant, but I leave this podium today confident in the ability of this legislature, our employees, and our department heads. I am confident that together we can accomplish our task of providing the people of Oswego County with an efficient, friendly, and effective government. And I'm also confident that we can accept and adopt the positive energy needed to find creative and progressive solutions to the issues that come before us, solutions that will help make Oswego County a better place to live, work, and raise a family. I thank you all for this opportunity and the honor it serves your chairman, and I look forward to a productive future for us all. Well, first, I realize you're not really standing for me, you just needed a break. Thank you. Legislator Wilbur, any public speakers on resolutions of the day?
There are none.
Consider it one fact, maybe there are more.
You don't need your water, you end up down there at home.
Got a thousand employees to thank, James. Welcome to the 2020 State of the County Address. Good afternoon. Before I did my official address, I'd like to take a minute to briefly speak about the issue that's on top of everyone's mind this week, the coronavirus. I want to assure all of our residents that our leadership team, in concert with our local state and federal partners, has been working diligently to stay abreast of this issue, and plans are in place to address the various potential scenarios should they develop. In the meantime, I'd like to encourage everyone to remain calm and to be vigilant in your efforts to take preventative measures to avoid exposing yourself and others to the virus. Do your part by following the advice of the medical professionals, and we should all come through this with minimal impact to our lives and communities. Thank you. As we celebrate our 204th anniversary throughout this year, we should keep in mind all of our predecessors who dedicated their time and talents to the ongoing mission to make this a better place for all. I would especially like to remember legislator Jack Prowe, Kenneth Wheeler, Jr., and Dan Eath, three former members who left us for a much grander chamber in 2019. To our first-term legislators, legislators Yurden and Yurden, Lori Mangano, Robert Wilma, and Mark Greco, and Ralph Stacy, I offer a renewed message of welcome that comes with my encouragement to accept and approach your newfound responsibilities in a patient and thoughtful manner. For some of you, this is your first foray into elected office and public service, so I suggest to you and to remind your colleagues, we did not choose this path simply to enrich ourselves. We are here instead to enrich our communities with a greater vision and a spirit of hope and achievement. After almost seven years in this body, and just over one year as a chairman, I was honored and humbled by your support when you chose me to lead the county into the new decade. The complexion of our county legislature is somewhat different with the addition of six new members, but our leadership team will largely stay intact, recognizing the progress that we have enjoyed over the last year or so. While many of the faces have changed, many of our goals and objectives have not. Much remains to be done, but I am certain that if we continue to grow our spirit of cooperation, both internally and externally, with our constituent communities and beyond, the future of Oswego County will get brighter with each new agreement and partner that we embrace. It has been said that the measure of a person is not where they stand in times of ease and convenience, but rather where they stand at times of challenge and controversy. Let us commit today to stand together and make the tough choices that will be necessary over these next few years to move the county forward. If you'll permit me, I'd like to start these conversations by sharing some recent accomplishments and thoughts about where we go from here. To start with, while it was a small reduction, we were able to craft a county budget for 2020 that resulted in a decrease in the generic tax rate. This was the first time in seven years that the rate has decreased. Having said that, it was worth noting that the rate had not changed for four years prior, and when we look back over the last 15 years, the rate for 2020 is 16.4% lower today than it was in 2005. To put that in perspective, if the 2005 rate of $9.20 per thousand had kept pace with inflation, it would be $12.11 today instead of $7.69. Through careful fiscal management, we've been able to negate the inflation impact on your tax dollars over that period. With this budget, the county has also achieved its goal of eliminating dependence on the use of unappropriated fund balance to stabilize the tax rate, making it the first budget in 15 years that we balance strictly between expenditures, expenditures, and revenues. This year, the fund balance can be appropriately used by the legislature for multi-year planning of our capital reserves, capital projects, and to cover any large unanticipated expenses that arise. This is a goal we've been working on for quite some time and one that all of our team can take pride in. Our 2020 budget provides funding at responsible levels for the services mandated by law and those valued by our residents, including snow removal, road maintenance, law enforcement, economic development, emergency communications and response, and human services for youth, elderly, the unemployed, and veterans. This has been and will continue to be a very difficult task going forward, one that needs careful and thoughtful deliberation as we attempt to strike a balance between keeping the county tax rate down and providing the types and levels of service that our constituents believe are essential to maintaining the quality of life that we all enjoy here in Oswego County. While it varies slightly from year to year, our annual budget is about $217 million. Of that, more than 80% pays for state and federal mandates. To help cover this cost, the state gives us $38.7 billion and the feds give us $26.2 billion. That's just $64.9 million for more than $174 million in mandated costs. We pay for the rest through property tax, pilots, sales tax, fund balance, and other miscellaneous revenues. If we're going to be successful, and our goal of keeping property tax stabilization is one of our top priorities in 2020, and if we want to do that in a way that minimizes our reliance on reserve funds, we need to find ways to increase our tax base and add jobs in our community. Working with our federal, state, and regional partners, I feel certain there are opportunities in front of us. We must also recognize that in some cases, we may need to make strategic investments to bring those opportunities to fruition. I look forward to working with all of you as we analyze and pursue every initiative that can make Oswego County a better place for all. We have clearly seen over this last decade, the challenges before us can only be overcome through a bipartisan and coordinated effort, one that reaches beyond the 25 of us deliberating here today. 2019 was an eventful year, and 2020 will see us continue to make even greater progress on many of the items that we've been working on. Some recent highlights include the completion of a new motor vehicle complex in Oswego, the Portland long overdue structural repairs to this building, our legislative office building, restoration of the historic lodge and infrastructure enhancement at Camp Zerbi, a new jet hangar at the county airport, and a new government services website, providing the public with easier and improved access to our staff and services. In addition, we have enhanced our efforts to work closer and more cooperatively with our local government partners. This has resulted in significant savings to most of those involved. Most notably, by working together to secure pharmaceutical services, the county alone saved over $1 million. Bringing some services legal and other in-house helped bring in another half million in savings. One of the local partners I'd like to touch on is Oswego County Land Bank. Formed by this body in 2016, the land bank was created to deal with blighted vacant and abandoned properties throughout the county. These properties were not generating tax revenue and were dragging communities and their tax values of neighboring properties down. After final approval from the state of New York, the land bank began its mission in 2017, and has since then worked to strategically address properties throughout the county and through demolition or rehabilitation, putting them back on the tax rolls, increasing the value of surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Since 2017, the land bank has returned $1.5 million in property value to the tax rolls, and the numbers continue to rise. 22 structures have been demolished, 25 have been completely rehabilitated, while 15 more are currently in various stages of rehabilitation. Over the course of the first few years, a strong partnership has developed between the land bank, the legislature, the cities of Fulton and Oswego, and most of our towns and villages, and even some of our local banks. When coupled with the good work done by the block builders in Fulton and the Renaissance Association in Oswego, land bank projects are helping to encourage neighborhood pride and investment, not just in our two cities, but in communities throughout the county. While not specifically a county project, our many years of partnerships with the New York D C helped to encourage that agency to acquire the former elementary school in a village of Cleveland for conversion into a new training facility. The project, when coupled with our plans to repair and rebuild the historic Cleveland Dock on Illinois Lake, will surely have some significant economic impact in our easternmost village.
Can I clap for that?
Finally, we can't overlook the partnerships we have developed under the New York State Shared Services Program. Our current shared services plan, developed by town supervisors, city and village mayors, and under the leadership of county administrator Phil Church, projects potential annual savings of more than $1.9 million across their various municipalities. A clear demonstration that coming out of our individual silos and working together, we can continue as a team to make Oswego County a better place. Looking forward, we have several initiatives on the horizon. Infrastructures and a few of our facilities will provide greater access for our customers. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution approving Oswego County Airport Hanger rental fee schedule.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as it is written, many of the upgrades we have nowhere on at the airport are increasing the fees.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Drummer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I'm gonna make a motion to table this resolution, simply out of the fact that I'm not convinced that we're charging enough still. I think particularly with everything that we're seeing going on with state mandates and what's coming down with Medicare, potentially, I think we need to really continue to try and invest in having a conversation about how we diversify our income. From my understanding, there's an extremely high demand for logistics at the airport, pretty lengthy waiting lists, so I think it's worth maybe bringing this back to committee, having the conversation. We don't necessarily have to be greedy, I'm not advocating for that, but I'm also absolutely not convinced that we're charging enough of the level of demand that's out there. So I make a motion to table this resolution.
Do you have a second? Any other discussion? So, what was I saying? Any others in favor to table? All those in favor to table? All those in favor?
Two in favor.
Pose.
Twenty-three opposed.
Okay. Back to the motion then. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Two opposed.
Carry. Thank you. Absolutely. Legislator Wilber.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules for two resolutions. First resolution being the awarding of a contract for construction of Capital Project 192. Second resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to a local law.
Any second? Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, resolutions themselves. Legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the resolution, urgent seduction.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding contract for construction of CP 192 Route 176 Howard Road Volney Sewer Project.
Mr. Chairman, I'm well aware of this is not an ongoing thing for 10 years. We're moving forward, outside, we're moving forward.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Thank you. Next.
Chairman, I have the following resolution, urgent seduction.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Let's hear it, Martino, Mr. Chairman.
Please vote.
Let's hear it, Martino. Hold on on that, we're on this public hearing.
Thank you. Legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have this resolution, urgent seduction.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to proposed County of Oswego Local Law Number 1 of the year 2020 entitled "Local Law Optinal Tax Exemption Under Real Property Tax Law 487."
This is simply a public hearing that has to do with the exemption of solar and wind farm taxing. So we opt out, so we can actually tax as we can as we.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Legislator Wilber.
Mr. Chairman, I need a five-second recess to talk to you guys. If the motion could go back, give this section. I don't think everyone else.
Any other motion? Any unfinished business? Any miscellaneous business? Thank you.
No public counter.
So there's been a motion to a juror? All in favor?